Was math boring for you guys when you were in school?
Yes. I'm not gonna lie.
Do we apply absolute value first or solve first?
We have to make it a variety so students are more intrigued. It's a three or four digit code. They're solving through a problem whether it's using the order of operations on polynomials or absolute value or multiplying or dividing with decimals and fractions.
Each code has one specific expectation that we're trying them to make sure they're understanding. So with my algebra kids, the very first lock that they were trying to unlock was specifically for exponents, which was a three-digit code.
The code did just the final non-value based coefficient into simplified expression. Alright.
It's really interactive and it's a fun way to put the problems so that like there's like a goal and like a reward to it. Would you rather do like a boring like worksheet about like stuff? I feel like this is a really fun way to like interact with other people.
Wait, 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 but can't you simplify 10 and 20?
Oh yeah.
With those codes, the students are able to come back to us once they have them.
Negative seven plus three. Um, four. Yeah, it's four. Negative four. Oh, skipity, bro.
You see the excitement of them in their group, then they go on to the next one and I'll announce. So we have a group going on to lock two.
I have a group going to lock two.
And then ultimately at the end, when they do escape, we do some kind of reward such as a six, seven medal. Six, seven medal.
That looks like seven, six.
Seven, six.
Kinda have to embrace it. I can imagine for some students that this would be an educational core memory for them. They're gonna talk about it in 10, 15 years and be like, remember when six, seven was a thing? Oh yeah, and in math, we got those awesome medals.
They have medals that they carried around all day. That's like six, seven.
P equals negative three and Q equals one.
My favorite part of the escape room is getting a chance to like get fries or something from it. And also the escape room itself though, it's kinda fun cause like even if you don't understand something, someone else might understand it better than you and can help you work through it.
It's just more fun than reviewing like just normally for a test and it can like help if you don't get something, like people will explain it to you and it's nice. Cause it's like, it's more people and like perspectives.
They don't see a ton of competition in math all the time and I think that's something that students thrive on.
They always say that like the reward is more than the heavy work that you're doing. This is definitely one of those things.
Oh my gosh, keep working, keep working, keep working. Keep working, keep working. But it's a three-digit code.
Board of Education, regular meeting for Tuesday, November 25th is called to order. Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Goodwin?
Present.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Present.
Mrs. Krevalovic?
Here.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Here.
Dr. Rowner?
Here.
Mr. Shavastov?
Present.
Open media acts is posted in the entry for those who'd like to read it. We have minutes from our November 11th board meeting for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved as published. Move on to special reports and presentation for 6.1, Annie.
Would Chris Turley please meet me at the podium? I was mentioning, I had the pleasure of being a parent from Mr. Turley's class, having a child in his class, and we had a wonderful experience. So, this is really exciting to be able to give this to Mr. Kurt Turley. So I put this forth as a motion. Whereas Chris Turley, a social studies teacher at Lincoln High School, has been awarded the K-12 Distinguished Teaching Award by the National Council for Geographic Education. And whereas Chris Turley is an exceptional professional who cares deeply about his students, holding them to high expectations and providing the support necessary to ensure their success in his Advanced Placement AP Human Geography and other courses. And whereas Chris Turley demonstrates exceptional leadership in geographic education by actively shaping the future of the subject, serving as an instrumental member of curriculum leadership teams that revise and updated the geography curriculum for thousands of students across Lincoln Public Schools and mentoring new educators. And whereas Chris Turley is widely admired and respected among his peers, both within Lincoln Public Schools, the state of Nebraska, and across the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Chris Turley for being honored by the National Council for Geographic Education with a K-12 Distinguished Teaching Award. Signed by Bob Rowner, President, and Dr. John Skretta, Superintendent of Schools. Congratulations.
Hello. First, I'd like to thank my family, especially my wife Jennifer and daughters Leona and Keely, who are here with me tonight. I appreciate the support they've shown over the years with the sacrifice of daytime so I can get my work done. I'm proud of my daughters are discovering the importance of learning, sometimes unwillingly, with connecting Bluey episodes to human geography, going to Lincoln High events, having math quizzes at supper, and by answering my connection circle questions. I'd like to praise the Board of Education and Lincoln Public Schools for the recognition of the National Council of Geographic Education Award. I respect the effort to acknowledge the hard work of teachers, especially in times where teachers are under immense pressure from within and outside of the education system. Talking to colleagues around the country, I know I'm fortunate to teach in Lincoln Public Schools and know they will continue to advocate more and more for students, or for sports, for students and for teachers. I want to dedicate this award to my current and former students. Without them, I would never have received this recognition. Their accomplishments continually inspire me to be a better teacher. The relationships I've made in the classroom have changed my life and have made me a better person. Teaching some of the most thoughtful, brave, funny, energetic, and compassionate young adults have led, has led to many moments of laughter, learning, and even tears. They have put up with my bad jokes, nerding out, and my high expectations that they continually surpass even with all the pressures teenagers face today. I hope that I can inspire them half as much as they inspire me. Hearing from students about this award has been the most fulfilling and best part of the receiving it. I didn't, I do not have time to recognize all the mentors and colleagues that have allowed me to grow as an educator and human being. However, my social studies colleagues at Lincoln High deserve a special shout out. They have helped me develop my teaching philosophy and strategies I use in the classroom. They have been there to celebrate my successes and inspire me to be a better teacher. Additionally, the leaders of many curriculum and assessment workshops have helped me develop my curriculum building skills and allowed my leadership in the district and state to grow. Finally, a special shout out to all my geography educators in the state, especially members of geographic educators of Nebraska, or GION for short. Especially Harris Payne, who's the president of GION for nominating me for the prestigious national award and believing in my teaching abilities, as well as Laurel Maslowski and Jackie Kelson for writing letters of support for the award. My final shout out goes to the subjects I teach, geography. I cannot list every single reason why I love teaching geography, but learning geography, especially human geography, allows one to gain an understanding of how every place and person in the world is connected. We cover so many interesting topics that explain how we can solve current and future problems and how the world works. For example, why Nebraska has better corn than the state to the east of us. I find teaching geography is easy because every day in class, we cover topics that relate to students' lives. Geography knowledge fosters curiosity and allows great, greater critical thinking skills and is foundational to learning other subjects. Without geography, we are nowhere. And I know that GION and CGE and LPS will continue to provide tools and resources for students to learn geographic knowledge and skills needed to continue the betterment of the world and the people that occupy it. Thank you again.
Do I have a second? Fuchsia.
I'll second that.
Any comments? Everybody's happy. Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovic?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Next item 6.2, Marilyn.
Brenna Hanson, will you join me at the podium? This too will come in the form of a motion. Whereas Brenna Hanson, social studies teacher at Lincoln High School, has been selected by the Geographic Educators of Nebraska to receive the Bertolus, Gilder sleeve, Stoddard, and Stone Award. And whereas Brenna Hanson works to inspire a love of geography among students by finding innovative ways of teaching the curriculum. And whereas Brenna Hanson continuously demonstrates her leadership by writing geography inquiry lessons and district common assessment, mentors new teachers, leads professional learning, and creates highly sought after geography materials. And whereas Brenna Hanson is widely admired and respected among her peers, both within Lincoln Public Schools and the state of Nebraska. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Brenna Hanson for being selected by the Geographic Educators of Nebraska to receive the Bertolus, Gilder sleeve, Stoddard, and Stone Award. Signed by Bob Rowner, President, Lincoln Public School Board of Education, and Dr. John Skretta, Superintendent of Schools. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I am incredibly grateful to the board for recognizing this award tonight. I also want to thank the geographic educators of Nebraska, not only for this honor, but for their tireless, tireless efforts to further geographic education across our state. To receive the Bertolus, Gilder sleeve, Stoddard, and Stone Award for Congressional District One is humbling to say the least. Teaching geography at Lincoln High has allowed me to invest my passion in the most rewarding way possible. I truly believe that geographic education taking place in LPS is creating informed, empathetic citizens. When students grasp these deep connections between concepts like culture, language, and place, they gain a more meaningful understanding of their daily existence. While I stand here individually, this recognition is a reflection of the exceptional leadership that has shaped my five years at Lincoln Public Schools, as well as the LPS educators who taught and inspired me when I was a student. I owe a significant debt of gratitude to Jackie Kelson, who nominated me for this award, but also has been super instrumental in my professional development. Jackie has consistently championed the growth of our younger educators. By entrusting me with opportunities early in my career, from facilitating professional development and writing curriculum to mentoring peers, she empowered me to contribute to our district in ways I hadn't imagined possible. I also want to share this honor with Lincoln High. We often say Lincoln High is a special place. I'm grateful to work in a building that is defined by collaboration and a shared purpose. Specifically, I want to recognize the social studies department. Working alongside such dedicated, gifted educators pushes me to be better every single day. They are an incredible group of professionals and this recognition is a testament to the strength of our entire team. I also want to thank my husband Tyler for your enduring support tonight and every single step in my career. I also want to thank my parents for their support and a special acknowledgement goes to my mom who spent years serving as a para educator and now substitute in the district. And finally, board, thank you for this recognition and acknowledging the vital work done by geographic educators in Nebraska. Sincerely, thank you.
Alright, do we have a second? Mara?
I second.
Any comments? Laura, would you call the roll?
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovic?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Next item 6.3, annual SRO's program report, Annie. Or Brett.
Alright, thank you for the opportunity to share this abbreviated School Resource Officer Program Report with you this evening. The full report and a more detailed presentation is also available on the city website. And that was presented in front of the SSKIB board back on November 6th. Need to thank the team at the Lincoln Police Department Crime Analysis Division, Jeff Peterson and Tricia Todd for their efforts. And I would especially like to thank the team here at LPS, Dr. Bethany Brunsmann, Dr. Don Mazzi, Gail Lowry, and Ryan Zabava and Joe Wright. This team stands ready if there are questions at the conclusion of this summary report. Here's the history. Again, this agreement, the interlocal agreement was agreed to in 2018 and these annual reports begin in 2020. Our board reps, there are all, there are three board reps each year on the SSKIB board and this year that is John Goodwin, Barbara Byer, and the vice chair is Annie Mumgarde. The six SRO, SRO program goals, to create common understanding that school administrators and teachers are ultimately responsible for school discipline and culture. SRO should not be involved in the enforcement of school rules and the clear delineation of those roles and responsibilities as to student discipline with regular review by all stakeholders is essential. And this is one of the parts of that, at the end of that goal. To minimize student discipline so they do not become school-based referrals to the juvenile justice system. To promote effectiveness and accountability. To provide training as available to SROs and appropriate LPS staff on effective strategies. To employ best practices so that all students are treated impartially and without bias. And to utilize best practices for training and oversight with the goal of reducing disproportionality. So these six goals, we're gonna see them again because as we work through our recommendations and our takeaways, we have it structured based on those six goals. Overall, here's the, you know, as far as the SROs are concerned, there were four complaints filed against SROs in the 24-25 school year. Three were classified as exonerated and one did result in a warning. There were 12 commendations from a variety of different events. And as you can see on the screen, 53 hours, that is an average of all of the, statute requires 20 and our program has always exceeded that, that, that 20-hour number by a great deal. So there's the, again, overall, the SRO program, it's a, there's a full report that has many charts. It's 125, 130 pages with some appendices on it. There's also a much longer and more complete slide deck on that SSKI website with the city. And so, we're gonna go through tonight just our representative takeaways from the data from those six goals. I will not read every slide to you, I'm gonna hit some highlights as we go. Again, the first goal, I think in bold type there, the number of CFS is a call for service, dropped 19% from last year and has dropped for three consecutive years. So we're excited about those numbers. You know, if you want to look at it from a bar graph perspective, here's the same thing with a few more numbers and a few, a little bit different way to look at it. So the overall calls for service at both buildings or in middle school and high school is combined, see the, a four-year average is that light green number compared to the orange number, which is the most recent school year. And so that's a huge decrease over that timeframe. The exciting part about this is what one of the beginning goals was, is that the SRO program does not elevate student discipline issues to law enforcement matters. And that's one of the things that we're trying to accomplish here. Goal two was to minimize discipline issues. Suspension data was about the same, you know, it did go down slightly. And we still recognize that there is some disproportionality for students who identify as males, students who identify as black, Hispanic, or two or more races, and even those that are participating in special education services or English language learning services or, and even free and reduced lunch. So while we had some improvement, we certainly recognize we have some work yet to do. This is a chart that goes along with those calls for service and, you know, connected to the student discipline issues, not wanting them to become juvenile justice system referrals. One of the keys is to have the administrator involved in those decisions. And so part of the training has been some hard work assuring that the administrator, the principals or associate principals are the ones that are making those calls for service and having that communication with the SRO. And as you can see, we've had some significant increase in that administrator being the primary person to start that call for service and a decrease in other, or pretty much staying flat. So again, the, the training there, we're achieving what it is that we set out to achieve. Goal number three is to promote effectiveness and accountability. So there's the, the board, the SSKI Oversight Board, as mentioned when we started. There is, there also is statute, 792703, or the ones at the bottom there, that our legislature has passed and they are part of law now. And basically, those are requirements. Anything that's measured is going to improve. So I think, you know, there's, we were doing this, it's now, it's codified in law and, you know, there's a rededication and a review of these numbers annually and the reports made publicly. We must main, you know, really work to maintain or improve the number of surveys that we get back from students and, and parents and staff because what you, again, measure and evaluate will improve. So we're gonna continue to work on, on that and you'll see that later on in one of our recommendations. Goal number four is to provide that training. As already mentioned, you know, we greatly exceed the number of hours. The law requires that we train one administrator in each building that has an SRO. LPS trains every middle school and high school administrator in those buildings right alongside the SROs that work in those buildings. So, and then I think the referral data continue to demonstrate that that ongoing training is effective in distinguishing between school discipline and law enforcement issues. Best practices that all students are treated impartially without bias. So this is where the school effort especially, but you know, this is part of the training and I can't speak to all of the LPD training, but certainly the prevention, accountability, restorative behavior framework is one of the steps that LPS has taken in order to try to improve those disparity numbers. You know, I think it is important to note that the, there is a positive perception improved across all of our demographic groups in the student survey. So while the numbers have gone down with the number of contacts from the SRO, the students that answered that survey have had contact with the SRO and their, their interactions with that SRO has, you know, actually improved in the, in the perception survey. So these prevention strategies aim proactively to create that environment that reduces that likelihood of unwanted behaviors occurring. And they try to, you know, really it focuses on establishing of the structures, systems, and practices to promote positive behavior and prevent the unwanted behavior is, is one of the main ideas of the PAR framework. And that's where that prevention comes in. Little bit more, again, along that disparity, so this would be the LPD data and the persons responsible over the past few years. And so you'll see that the disparity goal is 1.0. So we've got some numbers that are clearly higher than 1.0 and those are the ones that cause us the most concern. So not ducking those or avoiding those. Think you will also see, you know, the numbers from 22, 23 to 23, 24 to 24, 25. In most groups, the actual physical number of students is decreasing that require a call for service. But the disparity is still too high. So, you know, we have some good and some bad there, but certainly we're gonna continue to work, anytime there's a smaller population, that, that, it does cause the disparity index to vary greatly, but that doesn't lessen the impact that a kid is a kid regardless of who they are, right? So, you know, we definitely want to keep that in mind, we do keep that in mind as we review. And then best practices for training and oversight, again, LPS is part of their strategic plan from 2024 through 2029, has two measurable goals with, that focus on disproportionality ratios. And the goals are to get it to 1.2 or less for all student groups and to reduce total suspensions for all students by 20% by 2029. So it's a, it's a, it's a piece of what is guiding our work here at LPS. We know disproportionality still exists, we're pleased with some of the trending down with the number of students involved, but we know we've got work to do. From the perception data, already mentioned this a little bit, you know, that overall the student perception that is that SROs do create a safer school. And they, those that had contact with SROs actually improved their perception from last year to this year. Very similar responses from families that, you know, believe that their student, if they had to deal with an SRO, was listened to, treated fairly and respected, and that the SRO basically did their job and handled the issue appropriately. Our takeaway from suspensions, as mentioned, they're very flat as far as one year to the next. You know, one piece I think you could extract out of this, as call for service has dropped, we haven't seen then an increase in suspensions. So that would tell us that likely there are less issues that are requiring discipline, period, because it's not just been a shift from one to the other. Okay, so while I don't have a number for that, that's, that is a conclusion that you could draw from, from the data. And again, knowing that we have some work to do with disparity. So this, this brings us around, so those were the six goals and our takeaways from our data. Recommendations, again, we kept it focused on our goals of those six goals, where could we maintain our focus and continue to work and improve? Recommendation number one is to maintain and continue the robust training for our officers and our LPS administrators. You know, there, I don't think there's any doubt that, that, that training has a positive impact and continually looking at what type of training are we offering to make sure that we are addressing all, you know, as many needs as we possibly can. Recommendation number two is to increase response rates. We did have a little bit of a drop in our parent, our number of parent surveys and our student surveys. And, you know, you could say, well, maybe that's because there's less interactions, so there's less survey responses. And yet, those of us, if, if you've lived in a world and education loves their data, 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 we love it, right? We love to, you know, get into it and use it to improve. What we measure and what we focus on, we will get better at. So we know that that's, that's a continuation and we never want to rest and not try to continue to improve those numbers. Third recommendation is to, again, improve and respond to disparity. What are those new development opportunities that may decrease disparity? We have that as part of our strategic plan here for LPS, so it's gonna continue to be a piece of what it is that we are working on, getting that disparity ratio to 1.2 or less for all student groups and to reduce those total suspensions for all students by 20%. And our final recommendation is to review the capacity of the threat assessment team. That data was not in this particular sample of a report, but one of the things that we have seen with our threat assessment team is there has been an increase in the need for... for threat assessment, or the, you know, the, the number of threat assessments this team has done. The entire SSK effort is to prevent, support, and be safe. The mental health team and the coordination with risk assessment is making a difference, so that's why we've decided to focus on this as one of our final recommendations. Given that we've experienced a rise in the number of these concerns being reported, thanks to an increased coordination with the mental health team, now seems like the right time to review the capacity of that threat assessment in order to assess and determine whether or not there may be additional needs to help support the capacity of that threat assessment team. And if so, what, what does that look like? How, and how urgent is those, how urgent are those changes? Are there needs now? Are there things we should be anticipating in the future? So that would be our, the four recommendations that, that the team came out of after we reviewed our data and did a couple of presentations. I might turn it over now to our board representatives that have heard the full report, John, Annie, and Barb, but do you have anything you would like to add this evening?
I would like to say that there's a lot of charts in the slide deck from the SSKI meeting that actually really give a lot of depth to the report that we've heard here. And quite a few questions were asked at that meeting by both, both the board members here and the representatives from the city. I would say that one thing I think was really, came out very, kind of was a beacon of light out of this, is that after seven years, we actually have really solid data from which we can start doing more than just gathering, more than just starting a few things, but really start doing some analysis. And some really deeper questions of like, what do we as a board want to do as a goal, I think, with what we're seeing here in the numbers that come back? I think it can help drive some deeper conversations of like where we would like to go, or what we'd like to see happening. You know, we have some great numbers, and we have some numbers that need some work, and that is truly understood all around, and it's really just great that we finally have our own data, that the whole point of starting this in, in 18 was to get us to exactly where we are today, which is to be able to look at it, analyze, but then take it into action and try to make some changes. I think one of the words missing, prevent, support, and be safe, we also need to maybe add the word and evolve. We've done great work in the, with our, with our SRO officers and the training, I think that to me, that's the thing that jumps out the most, is that what training has done for our own staff, as well as, I think, for our LPD, the department, and the officers that go through the training, and there's no doubt about that. And there was already discussion about how do we get more of our students to take these surveys, because we're, you know, we're getting a part of the picture, not the full picture. We have 40,000 kids, I mean, it's going to be hard to understand what a full picture is, but I would say that was kind of, for me, some of the takeaways.
Well, I want to thank you for your report, and I want to thank everyone for the hard work that's gone into going and making our SRO program different than what you usually find in our country, and leading our state in positive direction. I, I agree with Annie here about how important training is, how important going and having clear goals and objectives, and having our district assume total responsibility for student discipline, I think has been a real great game changer. And I wanted this all to happen seven years ago because of the disproportionality, and we still see that among different ethnic groups, but the groups with the largest number of disproportionality are those on free and reduced lunch and those who get special education services. I do think that there's some crossover there with different ethnic groups, and I hope that we go, and as Annie was talking about, using data to go and target our services and interventions, that we keep that in the forefront, that some of our kids need more supports and more resources so that they can make their school experience what it's supposed to be, which is education. I do want to say that, I'm so happy about this, that, I'm going to say that I would like to see the Lincoln Police Department maybe use this as a template for how to address the disproportionality that we see in our county jail. That's a suggestion, that's not a requirement or anything, it's just a suggestion, but I do think that training and clear goals and objectives make a difference, and so I hope they would consider that. And thank you all for all your hard work. I mean, this is a lot of data, this report is just really a small piece of it.
Any other, any other questions?
I just want to say thank you, thank you, ditto to what everyone has said. Collecting data is a lot of work, and I, for those who have put their time in to be able to do that and present this, I just want to say thank you. It's, it's without, I mean, we can pick at it all we want, but that, that work is not easy. And so, again, thank you for putting in the work to collect this data for us to be able to look at and, and know where we need to grow, right? And I appreciate this. This is an eye-opening for me on this side of the table, to be able to see the work that is being done and established. And thank you for having an open mind, and your team to have an open mind to grow and to get better and want the numbers to be better than what it are, what they are right now, so I definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd add, I'm glad you asked the students what they think and their perception, we want them to feel safe in school, so in the future, it might be good to know if there's any open-ended, like, the ones who don't feel it, what, why, but otherwise, but I really like the fact the vast majority of our kids do think they feel safer because of that, so thanks. All right, next we have public comment. Blue cards are available for those wishing to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes and may provide materials to the board. Please begin your remarks by introducing yourself, your address, the name of any organization you're representing. First, I have Jennifer Ferretti.
As you said, my name is Jennifer Ferretti, I am going to refrain from sharing my address just for privacy reasons. So my name is Jennifer Ferretti, I am a teacher, I've been teaching for 14 years, but my first job is a parent. I'm a parent of three, and I have two who are currently, whom are currently attending Roper Elementary. My daughter in second grade has struggled this academic school year due to the lack of teacher for 18 instructional days. Over a month ago, I set out to speak to you and had written an original speech which had a very different tone. That tone was due to a lack of communication and then misinformation that was put out into the media. After talking with my school board representative, I was able to get in touch with the correct person to discuss my concerns and gave useful information as to how the district was supporting my daughter and her classmates. From the moment I learned of my daughter no longer having a teacher, I climbed the chain of, the chain of command and gained little information along the way. I felt that Roper, especially Dr. Fuller and Mrs. Pecu, were left to fend the, fend for themselves and make do with very little. While I am still upset with the lack of communication passed the administration from Roper, I would now like to discuss my immense appreciation and respect for Dr. Fuller. During the 18 days of no teacher, Dr. Fuller and Mrs. Pecu helped to cover when no subs were available. With little substitute support, they did their best to be a familiar face in the classroom. These two administrators of the second highest enrolled elementary school in LPS added to their administrative duties to support my daughter and her classmates with, with the best abilities that they could provide. On Tuesday, November 18th, a fatal and tragic accident occurred along the path my children and their friends walk home. Being 30 minutes away, I felt helpless because I could not shield my children from walking past the accident. Then I received a phone call. It was Dr. Fuller telling me that she was walking my children through the neighborhood home. She personally walked my children home, along with the other children in the neighborhood, to protect them from witnessing the tragic situation. Dr. Fuller is not just a top-notch administrator, she is a compassionate and considerate person. Her level of dedication, leadership, and humanity deserve recognition. Thank you. Is that it?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for sharing that with us. We have another, no more blue cards, our next item is consent agenda. Are there any items removed from the consent agenda? Is there a motion for approval?
I move approval of the consent agenda items 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3.
Do I have a second, Barb?
Yes, I second that.
Okay, are there any questions, comments, or conflict statements? Okay, seeing none, Laura, would you call the roll?
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovic.
Yes.
Ms. Mungard.
Yes.
Dr. Rauner.
Yes. Next we have first reading items from this board committees, item 9.1.1, policy series 8,000. John.
Yeah, thank you, President Rauner. So Grace Committee, Grace's Government Relations and Civic Engagement, had some good productive dialogue on both of these policies and the recommended language changes. So that was at board committee meeting on November 14th, and then we had also, I had discussed these changes with board leadership just as part of our agenda prep. So succinctly, 8330 revises some language that was out of date and expands and reaffirms the longstanding commitment of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education to active membership in our state and national education associations, and that's 8330. 8420 is simply a statutory compliance update to align with Open Meetings Act requirements.
Any questions or discussion? Okay. All right, next, moving on to item, this will be back at our next meeting, next, item 9.2.1, USDA Urban and Community Forestry Program Grant. From Anthony or you or?
Yeah, Dr. Standish is, is not here, but Anthony's here, and he can address the forestry grant. Anthony Minz stepping up to the lectern right now.
Yes, this is, and most of the information is included in, in the agenda, but it's a forestry, forestry grant by the Nebraska State Operatum, and we are really going to use it from an operation standpoint to kind of accelerate our process for removing ash trees and some of our older, other older trees that just are kind of getting outdated and old need to be removed. So you can see in the list, we're going to remove approximately 75 trees, and we're going to plant back 125 trees. And part of the grant is that we must remove, we must replace one for every one that we remove. So one thing our team has looked at is we have already removed a number of trees from different sites across the district, so we're going to try to go back to those sites and, and replace those trees as part of this information.
Any questions? Barb?
I just want to emphasize the fact that you're actually planting more trees than you're removing, correct?
Correct.
That's great.
All right. Thanks, let's come back to our next meeting. Next, moving on to second reading, item 10.1.1, newly annexed property to the city of Lincoln. Do I have a motion for approval? Barb?
I move approval of 10.1.1 newly annexed property to the city of Lincoln.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovic.
Yes.
Ms. Mungard.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Dr. Rauner.
Yes. We have no expedited emergency actions or items removed from the consent agenda, so informational items, item 13.1 from the board committees, are there any board committee reports? Annie?
Not so much a report, but to say that the financial committee has met as a continuation of the 2526 budget and starting to work on the 2627 budget. It has begun.
Yeah, I have a report for, from the Government Relations and Civic Engagement Committee, which consists of Barb Byer, Mara, Krevalovic, and myself. We met on November 14th and held a closed session to listen, discern, and discuss current and upcoming legislative issues at the state and federal level. LPS Associate Superintendent for Business Affairs, Dr. Les Standish, reported on the Nebraska School Finance Commission to review the state funding of schools and their work to create a report to the legislature, which is due on December 1st. So we're all looking forward to see what comes out in that report. Also, Ms. Nola Derby Bennett presented the committee with an update regarding our LPS Lincoln Community Learning Center program, and she informed us that LPS CLC program supports 13,000 students across 31 sites. She shared that their staff is working on a plan regarding their response to changes in both federal funding and the NDE 21st Century Grant Funding Policy Changes, and that the CLC program has a dedicated team and many lead agency partners that are committed to continuing their important work. And in addition, we discussed the policy 8,000 that Dr. Skrata just presented on. Thus the end of my report.
Any other committee reports or special appointments? Okay. Super dinner report.
Thank you, President Rauner. It's my privilege tonight to celebrate that for the second year in a row, LPS had six of 12 finalists statewide for the Nebraska School Counselor of the Year Awards. All six were honored last week at the Nebraska School Counseling Academy in La Vista, where the organization named those counselors of the year. Statewide School Counselors of the Year, elementary level, Anne Spatansky from Clinton Elementary, and from the middle level from Scott Middle School, Kate Puttuck. So congratulations to our statewide winners there. Runners-up included Heather Harris from Everett Elementary, Janice Fiero from Irving Middle School. The high school state runner-up was Amanda Tomes from Southwest High School, and, drumroll, LPS School Counseling Supervisor Lori Hemmott was named Administrator of the Year. So really incredible showing at the state organizational level reflects the instrumental work positively impacting student well-being and outcomes that our counselors perform every day across LPS schools at every level. So congratulations to them. Also want to highlight state-level leadership and presence of Lincoln Public Schools, team members, and our dedicated board members who were able to attend State Education Conference last week. We were really well represented. Point of pride Thursday, Annie was joined by TCA Director Josh Jones for a presentation on the Career Academy and the importance of Career Academies in dual-credit learning and workforce preparation. And Takako Olson and Jackie Kellison presented on opportunity and access, breaking down barriers to honors course enrollment. Friday's sessions included Dr. Price, our Associate Soup for Human Resources, joined by John Goodwin, and special guest stars included Barbara Miller and Dr. Kara Lucas-Richt. I think Kara's back here tonight, and they had a great presentation on the innovative work that Lincoln Public Schools has done on educator workforce pathways and expediting those. Really, really great post-secondary partners and an inspiring session. And in addition to that, there was a Student Voices Forum at the same time that featured two of the five members on that Student Voices panel were Lincoln Public School students, one from Lincoln High and one from Lincoln Northwest. I think the fact that we were so visible in the programming of the State Education Conference this year speaks volumes about Lincoln Public Schools, demonstrates we continue to innovate, strive to lead at a state level, and while we share success stories, we also enjoy learning from our colleagues across the state. One other item with the public release- One other item with the public release of AQuest Accountability for a Quality Education System today and tomorrow. Say that fast three times. And school and district classifications and designations around accountability reporting tomorrow. We're going to see media coverage on that topic. And I just want to take a minute to make sure that we recognize the incredible efforts of our LPS team members, in particular, our Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Dr. Sarah Salem, our Curriculum Director, Dr. Takako Olson, our Director of Continuous Improvement, Dr. Amy Clark, for the supportive work with building principals as they engage their school improvement teams and their own school communities and communication around this. While test scores offer a glimpse, an angle, or a perspective, they do not offer the full panoramic display of the myriad factors impacting achievement that our principals and teachers are masterfully juggling every single day to create great classrooms and positive school cultures supporting student learning. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Upcoming events, LPS will be closed November 27th, 28th through the holiday. December 3rd, we have the Chamber Coffee at 8:00 AM at the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce office. And December 9th at 6:00 PM, we'll be back here for the board meeting. We have no, no public comment. We do have a request for closed session.
I move that we go into closed session for number one, negotiations and collective bargaining, and number seven, for legal advice.
Do I have a second? Yeah, Barb?
I second.
Laura, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Krevalovic.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov.
Yes.
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Yes.
Dr. Rauner.
Yes. We are in recess, and we'll adjourn after closed session.